Hello and welcome to this candidate's forum for Ward Five School Committee. The general municipal election will be held on Tuesday, November 4. Mail-in voting and early voting opportunities will also be available. I'm Marlene O'Brien, a member of the League of Women Voters of Wellesley, also serving on the Massachusetts State League Board and formerly on the National League Board. I will serve as the moderator today. And this forum is being cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Newton and by NewTV. The League of Women Voters of Newton urges all residents involved in Newton's electoral process, whether as a voter, supporter, organizer, or candidate, to do the following: maintain integrity and reliability in all campaign activities; ensure that communications are relevant, truthful, and fact-based; become educated on the issues; be open to honest debate; maintain civility as we focus on our shared interest in Newton's future; show one another courtesy and respect, especially where there may be disagreement. The League is responsible for communicating with candidates and for organizing the format, the questions, and moderators. NewTV's primary role is facilitating production and dissemination of the forums. Thank you to both. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. While the League encourages our members to become politically active, we have specific procedures in place to ensure the integrity of our forums and fulfill our commitment to being a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. Questions for this forum were solicited from our Newton member base and from the Newton League's Board of Directors. Please be assured that all efforts are made to create a wall between all the candidates and League forum planning. Members actively engaged in candidate campaigns are excluded from helping with developed forum questions. And now on to our forum. In Newton, the nine-member school committee consists of one member per ward and the mayor, elected by voters throughout the city. The responsibilities of the school committee are to select and evaluate the superintendent, to review and approve budgets for public education in the district, and to establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district, consistent with the requirements, of course, of law and statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education. We will begin by meeting the two candidates for the Ward Five seat on the school committee in alphabetical order by surname. Jenna Lauder Myra has lived in Newton for over 20 years and is a public interest lawyer as the executive director of a nonprofit that funds legal aid programs and projects to increase access to justice across the Commonwealth. Benjamin Schlesinger has lived in Newton for 33 years and is an entrepreneur and startup executive. We will start with a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement from each candidate. Then, we will pose questions to both candidates that will apply to issues or qualifications for their office. Each candidate will then have 90 seconds to respond to the questions, and the final closing statements will be limited to a single minute. Now let's go to the opening statements. Jenna, you first.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Jenna Myra. I'm a proud alumna of Newton Public Schools, the mom of two current students, a public interest lawyer, and a community volunteer. I'm stepping up to run for school committee now because our schools are at a pivotal moment, and I feel confident that I can help. I know how to bring people together and get things done. I have two decades of experience working with communities to solve tough problems as a legal aid lawyer, a policy advocate, and a nonprofit leader. I have been involved in collective bargaining as the member of a union and as an employer, and my entire legal career has been committed to standing up to those whose voices are often overlooked and fighting back against hate and discrimination of all kinds. I'm an independent candidate who's focused on solutions, not sides. I've had hundreds of conversations with people across Newton about our schools and developed four primary priorities for school committee. First, put students first and ensure that each student's full academic and social emotional needs are met in our schools. Second, fight for funding that fuels success and advances Dr. Nolan's thoughtful vision for Newton Public Schools. Third, restore trust and rebuild productive and collaborative relationships with all stakeholders. And fourth, foster digital health and balance by getting to work urgently to address the use of technology by our students, including AI, cell phones, and social media, to support focus, critical thinking, well-being, and healthy development. I'm looking forward to this afternoon's conversation. Thank you.
Ben?
Thank you. I'm Ben Schlesinger, and I'm excited to be running for school committee. I was born and raised in Newton, and today, my wife and I are raising our two kids here. I'm running with one focus: putting kids first. That means providing every student with the opportunity to thrive in an environment where great teaching is supported and resourced. We're at a critical moment. We have an extraordinary leader in Superintendent Dr. Anna Nolan, and we face real challenges, from budget constraints to community division. I'm running to ensure we can meet this moment with independent thinking and integrity. Community service is a core part of who I am. I've coached countless youth sports teams across Newton and served on the boards of both little leagues. I organized the service community to preserve teachers' and class sizes in 2023, and I served on the superintendent's advisory committee for the service principal search in 2025. My ideas have resonated with city leaders, and I'm humbled to have built a broad coalition of support. I've been endorsed by six school committee members, including the Chair Chris Bresky, and 15 city councilors, including the President Mark Laredo. I'm bringing together people who sometimes disagree fiercely because they agree that I'm the right person for the job. Our schools should be a source of pride and unity, not frustration or division. I'm running to help restore that sense of shared purpose.
Thank you, folks. Ben, we'll turn to you for the first question. If you could speak in concrete terms about your top priorities for the Newton Public Schools.
Okay. Thank you. Funding, academics, trust, educator relations, devices in AI. Let's start with those. We have had consistent funding challenges over the last few years. There are a variety of ways that we can look for more money for the schools. We need to work with a new mayor to try to develop a resourcing plan that doesn't put us in this situation every year. Academics. We need to get into what Dr. Nolan refers to as outcome-oriented leadership and management. We need to measure how our students are doing to improve the outcomes that we're getting for the investments that we're making in schools. Trust. We have lost so much when it comes to trust. I was a student in Newton in the '80s and '90s, and it was taken as sacred that the Newton Public Schools were fantastic. That is up for question right now, unfortunately, members of the parent community. Our experiences have been great, many families have. Others are still concerned. We have ways we can rebuild that trust. Educator relations. We all understand where we're coming from there. The school committee has done a lot of work over the last year to restore that relationship. I'm happy with what I've seen. I'm looking to continue that work to move forward in this new era with the teachers. Devices in AI. We've read the anxious generation. We understand the concerns, and we need to get ready for what's coming next with AI.
Thank you. Jenna, would you provide us with concrete expression priorities for the Newton Public Schools?
Sure, absolutely. And I briefly noted some of these in my opening statement. So as I said, my top priority is to make sure that students are centered in all of our decision-making and that all students and families feel safe and welcome in our schools. Some of what that means is making sure that students are receiving support when they need support, and they are receiving challenge when they're ready for challenge. And we need to find a way to meet students across that continuum of learning styles and skills. And a critical part of that is going to be funding, which brings me to my second priority, which is I think everyone in Newton is pretty sick and tired about the back and forth and the squabbling over the school budgets. We need to find a way to build more transparent and sustainable budgets from year to year so that Dr. Nolan and her team know the dollars that they can count on being there so they can build their services around that. I also spoke briefly about the need to restore trust and rebuild collaborative and productive partnerships, and I deeply believe in that. I've been a policy advocate for much of my career as a lawyer, and getting things done takes collaboration, and it takes working with people with whom you might not agree with on everything, but you agree with on a fundamental goal. And I think all the stakeholders in our school system and all of our city leaders believe in the strength of our schools and want to work towards that. And to do that, we have to put in the sweat equity to build relationships that are transparent and that operate in good faith. And the final thing is around digital health and balance. Technology is important. We need digital literacy in the schools so that students know how to use technology effectively and in a healthy way, and we need to build community norms and expectations that protect our students from having too much technology too early. Thank you.
Thank you. So Jen, the next question first goes to you. And that is, you referred to the budget, and we know there are budget constraints, but we'd like to know if budget funding was available, which of the superintendent's initiatives, proposed initiatives, would you yourself prioritize?
Well, there's so many fantastic ones to choose from, and we owe Dr. Nolan and her team a huge debt of gratitude for building such a detailed and expansive budget for us like last year so that we could really see some of the options available and some of her more ambitious goals for the school system. And I really do hope that we get there. Among the things that seem most important to me are expanding and growing the use of multi-tiered systems of support across the schools and across grade levels. My children had the privilege to attend Ainger, which was one of the schools that piloted MTSS in the Newton School Districts, and it's been an enormous success. It has provided a tiered level of support for students, so each student is getting what he or she needs, and you can really see it in the academic growth across the board at Ainger. So I hope that we can grow MTSS to other schools. I hope we can bring back some important things that have been cut in previous budgets, such as digital literacy coaches, who are coaches whose specific job is to work with educators so that they can better understand the new technology and, again, share it with students in a way that contributes to their education and is healthy and beneficial and has guardrails around it to avoid some of the negative consequences. I'd also love to see there be more electives offered in the middle school. It would be wonderful if we had additional after-school offerings at some of the schools for students. There's a lot of fantastic things we could do with more funds in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes, I'll start by agreeing with Ms. Myra. I think that MTSS, which is this system, which we also have at Service, where there are pull-out services and additional supports available to elementary students that help keep them on track so that they don't fall behind and wind up in a situation later on where they're behind. I think that's a fantastic program. Dr. Nolan feels passionately about it. The research supports it. I think that's one place that we would definitely look to invest. Our STEM class sizes in the high school are bigger than they really should be. I think we would invest in reducing them and also expanding the number of offerings around STEM that we make available. In curriculum, I sat down with Dr. Nolan, and I asked her, what are we not good at? And she said, when it comes to teaching, curriculum, and professional development, her quote was, "We have no game." So I think that we need to give Dr. Nolan the budget so that she can build us a first-class game when it comes to having curriculum and professional development for our educators that helps them do their job better and helps them feel more energized and be less overworked because they're not developing so much for themselves. Then I think you get to stuff like the career and vocational programs that we have, especially in New North High School. I think we can look to expand those. They probably don't get as much attention as they deserve preparing people for the trades, and if you can keep going after that, you start thinking about pre-K, and you start thinking, are we going to be in a position to offer a universal pre-K here in Newton?
Thank you. You receive the third question first. Here we go. Ben, here we go. This has to do with the teachers' union. Please describe your understanding of the state of the relationship between teachers, the teachers' union, parents, and the city. What steps are you and will you be taking to address the areas needing improvement, if any?
Okay. The state of the relationship, I would say, is cautiously optimistic. I think we are in better shape than we were a year and a half ago when the teacher's strike occurred. I think that the teachers have seen a more active effort from Superintendent Nolan, the administration, and the school committee, starting with Chair Bresky, to create more respectful relationships. And that was something that's come out as I've navigated the community and spoken with leaders, was how many teachers felt like under the previous administration and prior school committees, they hadn't received the kind of respect that they've gotten from Dr. Nolan and from Chris and the team over the last year. So that's very positive. I would look to continue that. That has to do with things like asking questions instead of making statements. It has to do with things like the office hours that Chris and Emily Prender are holding, which allows teachers to come and share their thoughts or ideas or ask questions of the school committee. You have to make yourselves available. The core answer to this question is always going to be about open communication, and that includes the parents, too, right? The parents are still rebuilding trust in the system after a period where kids have not gone to school enough. So I think we have to be thinking a lot about how do we communicate between the school committee, the administration, the parents, the teachers, in all of those vectors so that everybody feels like they know what's going on with the system, and we're not going to be stumbling from crisis to crisis.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you. So as I mentioned, I've spent much of my career working in unionized environments. I've worked at two large nonprofits, and so I was a member of Legal Services Workers' Union for a long time, and then I was promoted out of the union and was part of the employer's side of the bargaining. So I have a lot of experience, not just with the bargaining itself, but with managing and maintaining and growing and building a relationship between employer and union. And I know how important it is, and I know how much work it takes. And that work is both formal in terms of meetings and MOUs and documents that are exchanged, and informal in terms of just building personal relationships between folks on the school committee and in city leadership and members of the union. In terms of the relationship with the community, we do have an awful lot of work to do. COVID was incredibly challenging for so many families and so many educators. The constant bouncing back and forth from seemingly one budget crisis to another has eroded trust in the community that Newton is going to make the funds available to keep the schools excellent. And the strike itself was absolutely devastating, again, for community members, students, and educators alike. So we have a lot of work to do. And that work begins with transparent and frequent and reliable communication. That includes being honest with members of the community about the budget challenges that are ahead for the city and how those are going to impact the schools unless we collectively decide to make different decisions to better support our schools. So I'm ready to get to work on continuing to build positive relationships between all those stakeholders.
Thank you. And Jen, we'll start with you on the subject of multi-level classrooms. What are the pros and cons? So in other words, could you please identify the pros and cons of multi-level classrooms in the high schools? And share with us what you think the appropriate role is of school committee members in the public discussion of this issue?
Multi-level classrooms have certainly been a main topic of conversation in the discussions I've been having with educators at the high school level and with families and students. And I think it's a really important issue for the Newton schools to tackle head-on. And I appreciate that Dr. Nolan and her team and the current school committee has started some of that really important work, and I want to make sure that the next school committee carries that forward. In terms of the pros and cons, I think the pros, and I've heard this from educators and students alike, is that it leads to a diversity within the classroom, the sharing of views, the exchange of different learning styles, the ability of students to learn from each other and support each other, and all of those can be really positive. And I've heard directly from students who say they achieved things and learned things and felt more confident about things as a direct result of being in a multi-level classroom, and that's fantastic. The challenges are, it is very hard for teachers to instruct such a wide range of skill level, particularly in subjects that are based on what they call sometimes stacking skills, which means if you are lacking in one skill, the gap will compound very quickly over time. And those subjects include things like math and world language and some sciences. And in those classes, it is a lot to ask of a single teacher to be able to offer support to the students who need support and challenge to those students who need challenge. So we either need to do a combination of better training and support for the teachers in those classrooms, or think about providing more differentiation in those subjects so that every student is getting what they need from those classes. The school committee has an important role to play in encouraging the superintendent to take a close look at these issues and work to make improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes, the pros in the research are that the students are exposed to different students and different ways of thinking, and more importantly, there are pathways for students to move between levels so that you don't get tracked somewhere in, say, ninth grade and then stuck on that track for the rest of your high school career. The cons are that from the teacher's perspective, you're looking at a room with a wide range of abilities, and it's hard to know where in that range to direct your teaching to effectively teach all of the students in front of you. Here in Newton, the data says it's not working well. The teachers are saying it's not working well. They're writing op-eds to the Globe and circulating petitions amongst themselves. The students I talk to broadly say it's not working well, and the parents say it's not working well. So I'm sold. I think we need to move on from this idea here. Now, is there a universe where it can work? I think there is. Councilor Vicky Danberg was an educator in Brookline. She told me that she worked in this model for some time with a very small class size and multiple educators in the room, and I believe that there are ways that that could work, probably in the humanities. I think to Ms. Myra's point, it's probably very hard in STEM where the curriculum stacks and is cumulative on top of itself. Maybe someday we wind up in a universe where we can afford those small class sizes. I don't see us being there now. I think we have to try something new. The role of the school committee is going to be, you know, we don't directly influence curriculum, but we have to work with Dr. Nolan and tell her what we're hearing from the community and what we think is the right next step.
Thank you. So differing views to some extent, but very thoughtful responses from both of you about this important issue. Next, we're going to turn, and Ben, you'll be going first, to an issue that's going to come up over the next several years regarding the future of the Ward and Underwood Elementary Schools. What are your views on the proper process to be followed? So not whether, but on the proper process to be followed in deciding what to do with these school buildings and populations?
So the situation, if anybody doesn't know, we have two buildings that are older, very old, really in need of significant work or replacement. They are neighboring, and there's been discussion about whether they should be consolidated. Our neighborhood schools are at the heart of what makes MPS such a great school system. It's so important that we have the 15 elementary schools, and people go to their local schools. The community that builds up around those schools is really special, and it's wonderful, and it's good for the kids, and it's good for the schools. In this situation, we need to have a process where we bring community members. Now, we tried that, and it got a little bit unruly, but I think that we need to organize a process to figure out where are the different community members in the Ward and Underwood districts? And it needs to be driven not just by the school committee or the superintendent, but the mayor has to be a part of the process. Because if we do decide to build a new school, these schools are coming in at $80 or $100 million. It's a major investment for us. If we're going to renovate a school, that's going to cost a lot of money, too. So it's going to go beyond what the school committee can throw into its operating budget. It's going to be a question of, you know, a significant amount of spend. I think that we should be out listening. I think we should be drawing up options and surfacing options with the community. Options don't mean we're doing something, but it means we're listening to what people are interested in. The school committee did commit that nothing's getting closed over the next five years. That was about a year ago. So four years, I think we're probably not going to be doing anything major, but we should definitely be in the listening and learning process from our constituents.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you. It is a big question, and it's one that is sort of like the can that's been kicked down the road for a number of years, and I think that's been fairly unfair to community members who live in those neighborhoods. There's just been a lot of uncertainty and a failure to have a really concrete plan. So as Ben said, we know nothing is happening for at least another four or five years, which gives us plenty of time to bring people together and talk through why we might consider certain options and what the pros and cons of each of those options might be, including, are there ways in which we could, if we lost some of the neighborhood character by, for example, having a consolidated school that was a little further than some people were used to going to either Ward or Underwood? Are there other things we can do in those communities to maintain that really important connection between those neighborhoods? I think there are ways in which the schools could facilitate that. I think we need to be hearing all ideas from students, from faculty, from administrators, from the school committee, and certainly from the mayor and other city leaders. I think some of what's gotten lost in this conversation is some of the downsides of having the schools at the current sizes they are. The neighborhood relationship is certainly really important, but for example, at Ward in many of the grades, there is only one class per grade, which means those students don't get the chance to have different classmates and different experiences as they move through the school. So we just need to be open and transparent and open-minded about how we could come up with the best option that serves both communities' needs.
If I could add on there, I think that's a great point that Ms. Myra brought up at the end. The demographer for the school issued a report recently that said that school demographics, city demographics indicate population's going to rise. In the Ward District alone, 40% of the children are going to private school right now. That's way up from where it was before the pandemic. A little more time and runway, let's see if we can get some of those kids coming back. Let's see if we can increase the enrollment. If we don't, point is perfectly valid, if we do, then the numbers could change the thinking.
Jen, thank you. Jen, you have...
I mean, I think that's an idea worth exploring. I just worry that that creates another delay and another period of uncertainty for these communities who've been waiting an awfully long time to find out what's going to be happening with these schools. So I think that's a fine question to ask and to look into, but we'd have to be pretty certain that we would see the numbers go up at Ward to such an extent that it would really change the character of the school so that it would shift our conversation in any particular way. But I'd be open to hearing more about that.
Good. Jen, how will you work to ensure the safety, privacy, and well-being of underrepresented communities, LGBTQ+, and the disabled youth in our schools and community? And if you could be as specific as possible, that would be helpful.
Well, I really appreciate that question. As I noted in my opening statement, my entire career as a lawyer has been in the public interest space, and so I've represented a number of individuals and communities that fall into those categories, and I've spent a lot of time making sure that everybody is treated with dignity and fairness. And so that's a very important set of values that I would be bringing to the role on school committee. In terms of concrete things, we need to make clear that Newton Public Schools has a zero tolerance policy for discrimination or hate of any kind. We need to have proactive, anti-bias training in our schools for both faculty and students, and frankly, I think the school committee as well. And then we need to have specific accessible protocols for people to report things that have happened to them in school or that they've observed in school that made them feel unsafe or as if their well-being was being threatened. And then we have, need to have a system of accountability in which all incidents of discrimination or unsafe behavior is treated the same way, that we work with both the people who were the subject of that to feel comfortable and safe and have a sense of belonging again in the schools, and we work with the perpetrators of those incidents to understand the impact of their words or their actions and to work with them to be a sort of a safer and more inclusive member of the Newton School community. Thank you.
Thanks. Ben?
Yeah, I think it comes down to two pieces. You need to have your prophylactic remedy, which is about a zero tolerance policy that's set up as a deterrent, and it's about the training that you do so that faculty, staff, and students understand clearly the expectations about them. And then you have to have the treatments, the remedies that you put in place when something has gone wrong and something bad has happened. It's very important that we have crystal-clear accountability that ties to the zero tolerance policy. We can't make empathy a reason for not holding people accountable when they harm somebody in one of our most disadvantaged communities. It's simply unacceptable. We also need to figure out, how do we make these situations public in an appropriate way so that the community understands that actions are being taken? Now, there are a lot of serious privacy concerns. You can't reveal names, and you probably can't usually reveal the nature of exactly what happened, but a lot of people in the community see these things happen, and they feel they get swept under the rug by the buildings or the school system. We need, as part of restoring the trust with the community, to be willing to communicate and to say, hey, something bad happened, and we took action about it, and we don't want to see it happen again.
Thank you. We are now turning to the question of antisemitism. The Massachusetts Special Commission on Combating Antisemitism has recently voted to endorse a new set of K-12 recommendations to make classrooms safer, more supportive, and free from antisemitism. Would you suggest reconsidering any aspect of Newton Public Schools' policies in light of these recommendations? And if so, which policies? And to be, again, as concrete and specific as possible, which will help our viewers along with understanding your mindsets and positions. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm happy to get this question. Unfortunately, I have to start by establishing that antisemitism is a problem here. Unfortunately, I have to start by establishing that antisemitism is a problem here because I talk to too many people who don't believe that. Last year, the Newton Police Department reported there were 74 hate crimes and incidents across the city. 59 of them were antisemitic. Three were anti-Asian, and no other group accounted for more than two. This is a problem nationally, and it's a problem here in Newton. I am disturbed that the current presidential administration is weaponizing antisemitism for its own purposes, but that doesn't mean that it's not also a real problem here in Newton. What I'm most concerned about is the Massachusetts Teachers Association being pulled out on Beacon Hill with curriculum materials that they had provided to their members saying antisemitic stuff right there in the open. They were pushing it on their website. This is the teachers' union. We expect better of the teachers' union. Now, the teachers' union has said that they're going to spend $1 million influencing local elections. I really hope they're not planning to come here to Newton. This is a problem that we have to worry about. As far as what I would do for our policies, I think we need to be very clear to our faculty and staff that even though these materials were out there from the state teachers' union, the parent of the NTA, we do not approve of them. They will not be used in Newton Public Schools. We have zero tolerance on this topic.
Thank you. Jen?
Well, let me start with the part that I agree with, which is antisemitism is a real problem in Newton, and it touches me personally. I'm Jewish. I'm raising two Jewish children. I care deeply that every child feels safe and welcome within our schools. My job just before moving back to Massachusetts was as the legal director of an organization in Los Angeles called Betzettic Legal Services, which served the entire community of Los Angeles. Among our many fantastic projects was a project that focused on serving Holocaust survivors with low income and making sure they could access public benefits, reparations, and safe and affordable housing. So I've spent a lot of time working specifically with the community to make sure that there's no place for antisemitism in any of our schools or any of our communities. And I take that very seriously, and I plan to carry that forward as a member of school committee in Newton. I do think we have to be specific about what's happening here and what's not happening here. I disagreed with almost everything the Massachusetts Teachers Association has done and said around the war in Gaza in the last 18 months, and I was incredibly proud that the Newton Teachers Association, the educators here in Newton, took the time to publicly distance themselves from some of those most harmful comments, and that Dr. Nolan and all the educators I've spoken to here have been very clear that none of those extremely objectionable materials would ever make their way into a Newton classroom, and there's no evidence they ever had. So we need to keep all of that up. I think we don't want to be conflating what may be going on at a state level with what's happening here on a local level, and we need to stay focused on what's happening in our schools with our educators and with our students.
Thank you. Ben?
Well, I agree with that. I think that it's a good thing that this stuff, as far as I'm aware, hasn't made it to Newton yet, and my statement was very simple. Keep it out. It may not come here. This is a preventative battle that we're fighting to keep it out.
Other last few...
I guess just one last comment I'll make, which is there has been this insistent drumbeat since I announced my campaign for school committee that I am somehow backed or associated with the Massachusetts Teachers Association. That is simply not true. I've not had a single conversation with anybody in that organization about my campaign. They've not provided any support, financial or otherwise. I don't know what else I can say to the community of Newton, other than that is completely untrue.
Thank you. So that was meant to give you an opportunity to speak more to the antisemitism point, but now we're going to be turning to the closing statements. And you each have a minute for your closing statements. So we'll start, since we started the opening statement with Jen, we'll start the closing statements with Ben, and then move to Jen, and then I'll have a few more things to share with the audience about information on voting and on the League and thanking all of you.
Okay. Thank you, Marlena. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Newton. I do appreciate the opportunity to be here and also to NewTV, to you, Marlena. Local news, it doesn't need to be said, I guess, to the people who are watching, but it's under fire, and it's so important for our community to have the opportunity to hear from people like us discussing these important issues. So I'm grateful that you're doing this for us. Our schools are our most treasured asset. They are the heartbeat of our community, and we need to invest appropriately in our schools with a mindset of doing what's best for the kids. Over the last five years, unfortunately, adult issues and adult challenges have gotten in the way of providing the classic Newton education to our children. We need to get back to doing what we're so good at. We need to empower our fantastic superintendent to lead us, and we need to make Newton Schools the best public school system in the state.
Thank you. And Jen, you have a minute.
There's a phrase I read recently that came out of Shaker Heights, Ohio, which is a community that has some similarities to us here in Newton, and it is, "A community is known by the school it keeps." And I want to make sure that Newton can continue to feel proud of its schools, and I think that we can. We've just got to do the work. I have the experience, the perspective, and the independence to protect what works, fix what doesn't, and keep Newton Schools and its future thriving. I would be honored to have your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you both. I mean, this back and forth we've had really embodies what the League hopes to see in civil discourse, thoughtful discussion, and all the types of values that we hold dear that I outlined at the beginning of this program. So Newton can be very proud of the two of you for running. Thank you for choosing to run. And now we'll turn to some closing remarks of thanks. So I'd like to thank both of you. I'd also like to thank NewTV, Eugene in particular, and the League of Women Voters of Newton, and Sharon in particular, and our wonderful Annette Timer for providing this opportunity for voters to learn about the candidates. Let me remind you that both these candidates are running for Ward V seat on the school committee of Newton. All Newton voters may vote for one of these two candidates. The polls will be open on November 4 from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can vote absentee or early by mail or in person. For more information, including to learn where your polling location is, you can call the Newton Elections Department at 617-796-1350. They stand ready to help you. Or visit the city's website at newtonma.gov. Be sure to check the Newton League's website at lvnuton.org for more information about our upcoming Voters Guide, and please consider joining us and becoming members. Today's forum is a co-production of NewTV and the League of Women Voters of Newton, and any reuse of this program requires the approval of both NewTV and the League and must be shown in its entirety without editing and only after the program initially airs on NewTV. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any specific candidates or political parties. It does, however, take positions and advocate for issues that it has studied. Membership in the League is open to all of you, and we hope you will contact or visit lvnuton.org and follow us on Facebook and Instagram. NewTV is Newton's award-winning state-of-the-art media center specializing in television production, training, and building community partnerships. It is Newton's primary source of locally relevant programming. Membership in NewTV is open to every Newton resident. For information, please call 617-965-7200 or visit its website at newtv.org. Again, I'm Marlena O'Brien for the League of Women Voters, and I thank you for watching. Participate in our elections, local, state, and national. And remember, democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you for tuning in.